Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
All righty, so this is a special meeting. We're going to go through the third public hearing of five public hearings on the transition to district-based city council elections. City Clerk or City Manager.
As the mayor mentioned, this is our third public hearing of five. Tonight, we do have draft maps available. All of the population-based ones are printed up in front, and they are available in the agenda packet, and they were posted online within our posting requirements. And Dr. Levitt from NDC is here to give a presentation.
Great, thank you. Hi there. Yeah. Doug, can you take care of that? Yeah. All righty, sir. How are you doing?
Thank you, Mayor Edgar. I want to thank you, members of the council, staff, and members of the public who are here tonight. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt, and I'm here to talk to you about these draft maps we have for tonight, we have to present to you tonight. This, I want to start by just kind of going through the project timeline. I hear a little bit of echo coming in, so that's just why I'm pausing every second to make sure that it's working right. This is the third of five public hearings. This is the first public hearing in which we've been able to show you some draft maps. We have several to show you here tonight, but this is not the end of the process. We have a fourth public hearing on July 9th. At that point, the board has the option of selecting a map, a possible for possible selection in first reading. Otherwise, that will happen on July 19th, which will be the map selection and adoption. I want to be very clear, this is not going to affect the November elections this year. This is for November 2020 because we are past the registrar's deadline for maps for this year's election. In November 2022, or the first, actually, it will be three, first by-election in three districts, and then in November 22, the remaining districts will hold, or, sorry, this year will have three districts. So it is 2022 districts will be up, and November 22, 2022, three additional districts will be up. I also mention this because in 2021, we'll be doing, we'll be getting the results of the 2020 census. This means that three of this current, these districts that were drawn here today will actually never hold an election because after the 2020 census, we're going to have to look at the population numbers again and see if they still remain legal. And so, this is kind of jump-starting us into the districting process, kind of easing us into it before the 2021 redistricting, when the state, county, and just about every other public agency across the state will be redrawing their district lines as well. Now, what criteria go into the preparation of these maps? And I know this is actually kind of one of the biggest things I had a lot of discussion about with staff and with members of the public over the past few weeks. The top one is equal population, and this is on that right, that left-hand column, federal laws. These are things that the Supreme Court tells us we must do. And so each of the six, seven maps we have here today, the six you see, and then there's a map on the backside of one of these up here, are balanced in terms of the population. That means that each district has more or less the same number of total people as every other district within that map. That's a legal requirement the Supreme Court requires us to do. And this includes everybody. It uses that 2010 census total population count for that number. In addition, the Supreme Court also requires that we follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. Race cannot and was not the primary driver of any of these district lines, however, it was one of many factors taken into account. Each of these maps has approximately two districts that are about 20% to 25% Latino by eligible voting population, and about one district, that's about 20% to 25% Asian-American by eligible voting population. However, there's, as we talked about over the course of this process, there's no particular concentrations, other than slightly higher numbers along Los Alameda's and Cotella Boulevards. And so, we can't get a majority Latino district, we're not looking at majority Asian-American districts, we are looking at just slight concentrations. Now, on the left-hand, on the right-hand column, sorry, traditional criteria, these are things that we have to take into account and balance alongside the other criteria we look at. And the top one, we looked at communities of interest, neighborhoods and communities, and certainly, a lot of the public maps that we have received have served as ideas and inspiration behind this communities of interest criteria, as much as a testimony we've taken over the last two meetings. We also looked at the shape of the districts, considering factors such as compactness, contiguity. Given that we have to balance districts by population, perhaps sometimes the compactness and contiguity is not what we want it to be, but we have to keep, in order to keep those districts equal in terms of population. And so, I'll start with some of the public maps. We received four full maps from members of the public. We reached out to each person who submitted a map. These are three different submitters, so total of four, but from three different people. And we worked with them. Two of the map, two of the, two of those conversations resulted in three public maps we have here today, the El Ordani maps three and four, and the Strather map two. The other person, we had a long discussion about the requirements, and then he ended up sending an email in support of one of the other maps, rather than continuing to draw his own proposal. I'll note that none of these maps were population-balanced as drawn. We had to work with them in order to figure out how to meet that equal population requirement. And this really takes us into the heart of this process. In addition to the maps here today, and they are also available not only on the district's website, but also on an interactive online viewer, sort of like a Google Map-style viewer where you can search for addresses and locations and find out where you live in each of the maps, turn each of the different maps on and off. So I'm just going to talk through a little bit of the key features very briefly through each of the four NDC drafts. I hope that the members of the public are here to talk about their own maps, and we would, I'll be happy to pull them up during your presentation if you'd like to refer to them. The green map looks at trying to draw what we thought of as the more compact option, keeping the entire Old Town area, population areas on both sides of Los Alameda's together, crossing the freeway, or crossing Cotella Avenue with District 2, along a single road, rather than kind of spreading it out across the apartment row, putting the Carrier Row, Old, New Dutch Haven area together, and reaching in just as far as we needed to in the apartments, keeping the southeast together, the military, or southwest together, the military base, and Highlands neighborhood, and then creating a more central District 3 in the central part of the apartments, including Suburbia and Old Dutch Haven. One of the things you're going to see a lot of in our maps is that the apartments are divided into three or four, maybe sometimes, and look in this map, five cases. The apartments make up about 45% of the city's population, but because of where they're located, right at the center of the city, it's like a lot of districts end up reaching into the apartments to balance those numbers. In addition, when I talked about those two, 25% Latino districts, those are districts 1 and 3, and that 25% Asian district in this map is District 2. And so, in order to get those numbers, in order to, you know, make sure that we're keeping in these maps the Latino and Asian-American communities in Districts 1 and 2 respectively, we can't just put the entire north together without seriously dividing the Old Town communities. In addition to the, now, we want to present you with some options, and so, we have the green map to start, but the purple map does some very different things. For example, it creates a district entirely in the Apartment Row neighborhood in District 3. District 5 keeps all the communities along Los Alameda's, south of Cotella, together as much as possible, linking the Highlands with Suburbia and New Dutch Haven. And so, in this map, District 1 then is, stays to the north, a little bit more than it does in the green map. The tan map, another option that tries to bring District 2 a little bit more westward, so rather than coming in on the west side of Bloom, or east side of Bloomfield, this one comes down on the west side of Bloomfield. This one keeps the areas that are by the both entrances to the military base together, the Highlands and part of that neighborhood along Farquhar. And finally, the yellow map was an attempt to really try to create a compact district in the center of the apartments, trying to divide the apartments in a more rational and clear fashion than perhaps in some of the other maps. And so, even though, but this one does result in some other communities being a little bit more divided, I like to say this one puts New Dutch Haven and Old Dutch Haven together, even though they're not next to each other. So, these are four very different concepts, but you can see kind of some of the limitations just of the geography, that, you know, in order to keep the districts compact and contiguous, what we're doing oftentimes is having to go through neighborhoods we may not prefer to, in order to get the population numbers, or to, you know, or just simply to get the shape, keep the shape, keep the district together. In addition, we have four maps from members of the public, or three maps, El Ordani's map 3. For those of you who are looking at the big map, El Ordani map 4 is on the backside of El Ordani map 3. We do have this printed out and available to look at, and Strather map 2. In addition, we've printed off the original submissions, and they're available behind the final maps on the poster boards. So what are we doing here tonight? Well, what I'm hoping to get tonight, and this is kind of starting this process, or, you know, continuing this process, is, you know, we're not picking a map tonight, but what we're hoping to get is some direction about where we need to go from here. We're showing you some different options. What haven't we shown you that you want to see? What map works best for your communities of interest? Conversely, which one is just unacceptable, divides your communities of interest too much? We'd like to be able to bring back to our next public hearing any revisions or any changes so that we can process, continue to proceed and move forward. And so, if there is anything that we can bring back to show you, let us know tonight. We do need to have any maps for the next hearing available seven days before, especially if it's a map that the council will choose. And so, and not just for the council, but for members of the public as well, if you're thinking about submitting something or getting in touch with us, we will need to have at least that seven-day window to be able to post something new. So please get in touch with us early. A lot of, a lot of the trouble we ran into with the maps was, we got them right on the deadline, and so we had to work with our submitters over the last week in order to get them in. If it's a map that the council might adopt, we need to have that published seven days before the next hearing. So I'm happy to answer any questions and take your comments as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the council, and what I'm also going to do is open up for this public hearing, so we'd like to get any information or comments from the public at this point, so if anybody would like to make a comment. And for the public hearing for this, City Clerk, what is the time limit?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. So if anybody in the audience would like to come forward and address this with the council, this would be the time. Good evening.
Hello, councilmembers. Joel Block, I live in Rossmore. I wanted to point out that for the first two hearings, people unanimously asked that transparency and outreach be done. They also unanimously said, "Don't break up Apartment Row." It seems like those voices of the community were not heard. I'm not sure why the demographer said that, oh, we had to break them up in three different districts. Apartment Row, for three out of the four maps that were done by the demographer, are broken up into five separate districts. So, if you're an apartment dweller, in Apartment Row, you may have one of five different council persons that you're going to have to deal with. Apartment Row was established by the city as part of its zoning, just like all the other complexes were. Breaking it up is a serious mistake. The housing of Apartment Row is largely R3, if not exclusively, which means it's apartments, it's not two-person units, it's not one-person, one-family units, it's apartments. They have a commonality in socioeconomic status, parking issues, you've heard this in previous hearings. Why break it up in three out of the four maps into five separate districts? And in the fourth map, it's broken up into four separate districts. That's not acceptable, and it's going to subject the city to a lawsuit because the apartments basically track multi-ethnic communities. To the extent that multi-ethnic communities exist in Los Al, they are concentrated in Apartment Row, and to a significant extent, in Old Town. The other interesting thing about the four proposed maps is, three out of the four are over 7% in variance. Only one is less than 7%. So to say that it was necessary to do that in order to have even numbers, well, that's clearly barely even numbers. If you look at Ordani map number 4, that is under 7%. It keeps Apartment Row largely together. It's not perfect, but I suggest, if you want to be sincere in carrying out the mission of both the state and the federal Voting Rights Acts, and avoid litigation over this issue, try to modify Ordani 4. It keeps downtown area together, all the commercial people together. I see the red light is going, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel.
Good evening.
Good evening, Barbara.
And I'm Barbara Farrell, for those of you who don't know me already, and I live in Los Alameda's. I want to, I want to give you an idea of the process. Joel has actually stated very clearly that with 45% to 46% of the population, Apartment Row should have two districts, any way that you look at it. And where it's broken up is an insincere way of putting things together, so we still don't have representation in Apartment Row. So that's very clear to me, and, you know, you can review it, and I'm sure the demographer will work with you on that. Your percentages are off, ours are very even, pretty much. I, you know, wasn't that happy with little fingers of things going in and out, but geographically, because we have to stay within a block, and our blocks are so census-dense, we have to, we can't break a block up, so we have to take a block here and there. So, that's the imperfection that we have on those maps. But I do want you to know that after the demographer worked with the maps, and I want to thank Mayor Edgar for helping to facilitate that, because we were under the gun and rushing and rushing, and we didn't have access to a tool, so that was very, very helpful.
Thanks.
And it wouldn't have happened as fast without you. So, we like to refer to these as the People's Maps, because they weren't developed alone. Christine did not develop them alone. She submitted them for us, but we had a group of people from various neighborhoods, from Carrier Row. All right. I don't know all the neighborhoods, but there were three or three neighborhoods, at least. Okay. What he said. And also someone from Dutch something or other. So we had people from different areas, and Apartment Row. And we went over it, we thought our maps were the most fair, and we voted unanimously to submit those maps, and we hope that you're going to choose one of them, because these maps actually, they, they fulfill the intent of this, of the Civil California Voters Rights Act, and also of the Federal Act. So, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Barbara, excuse me, Ms. Farrell, could you come back? There was a question for you, just real quick.
Can you say, the People's Map, which ones were those? If you can identify them, so.
It's called El Ordini 3 and 4.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Philip Sav, and I live in College Park North, and I was part of the group that was mentioned, which worked on the development on maps 3 and 4 by Ordini. And I, I think those maps, as you said, both meet the criteria of the California Voting Rights, and basically, they meet the intent of those, of that act. Maps 3 and 4 clearly identified District 3 and 4, which is Apartment Row, as being unique, because they are very different from the other districts 1, 2, and 5. And this can, is clearly shown by the statistics that the demographer provided for the whole, all those districts. And basically, the statistics show that District 1, 2, and 5 are very similar. Their residents are mostly middle-class or upper-middle-class. However, I clearly identify District 3 and 4 as less affluent with higher concentration of minority people. And of course, the statistics, I'm not going to give you the analysis or the statistics, but one of them, for instance, is the nursing, where 90% of the people rent in the, in that District 3 and 4 are interns, whereas in the, in the other districts, it's around And if you look at the education level, all those things identify Districts 3 and 4 as unique in the city of Los Alameda's, and they should be represented. Thank you.
Do we have any other people that would like to provide comment? All righty. With that, I'll go ahead and bring this back to the city council. We'll start, Councilmember Chirco.
Mr. Demographer, did your maps, the maps that you created, Dr. Levitt, did they consider voter registration or voter turnout at all, when you were drawing those maps?
So, we have to use total population for balancing the number of people between districts. However, you know, that, that is, that is one of many factors that we consider overall as part of communities of interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you know, I look at all these maps, and obviously, none of them are perfect maps, but part of my concern with some of the maps where we have two districts in Apartment Row, and I understand the intent there, and the desire to have two districts in Apartment Row, is I look at the voter registration numbers and the voter turnout numbers for those districts that the demographer provided, and they're, they're pretty low. I mean, in 2014, El Ordani map District 4 had 232 people voting. That is really low. And District 3 had 307 people voting, by far the two lowest districts in that map, in that, in that proposed configuration. And so, one of the concerns that I have with that sort of map is that we're going to have a significant portion of our population with a couple of districts where people historically have not voted, and also, historically, people have not run for city council. And on the rare occasion where they have run for city council, you know, they haven't won, or, or, you know, they think they won a couple of times. I think in the last 20 years, we've had a couple of folks from Apartment Row, but other than that, by and large, not much there. And so, I foresee a situation where we don't have anybody to run for city council, maybe not in the near term, because there's a lot more interest lately in the city council, but if you look historically, that's one of my concerns with those map, maps. But I'm, you know, I'm open to considering all of them, and I am considering all of the maps, but that's, that's sort of my initial take on those.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
I'd like to know, what happens if no candidate does apply?
You fill it like you would fill any vacant position on the council, although it would have to come from that particular district once districts are in place, and once you've held, once you've held or should have held the first election in that district.
Okay, so what happens if you get nobody?
So, if, if, let's say, let's just say, for the sake of example, District 1 is up in 2020, and nobody runs in it in 2020, then the council that takes office in early 2021 will have to appoint somebody from District 1.
Now, my point is, if nobody tries to run, what makes you think there's somebody who's going to apply for the seat after the fact?
I think I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question, because...
It's not. If nobody runs, okay, nobody runs in the election, and then the council has to appoint somebody, we take applications to appoint somebody. How do we, how do you appoint somebody if nobody applies? What happens at that point?
Well, I mean, I know a lot of school districts that have this problem have to actively recruit candidates. They have to engage in programs where they have active outreach in that neighborhood or in that community, in that part of the city, to try to encourage somebody to apply.
You want some opinions also, as we go along?
Well, I think it's important. I, I mean, I heard that, too, and you're just thinking, that's really going to provide really good government when we can't find somebody, and we're going to go out and actually try to recruit people to spend 20 hours plus a week to do a job that doesn't pay anything, and hope that they do a really good job. So, I don't know. I, what was your comment?
No, I mean, I wanted to talk about some of the districts.
Sure.
If I could. Let me take, for example, the green map, even though it's not my favorite, or the purple map. I, I think it's important, down on Dutch and Carrier Row, and then the east end of Apartment Row, that's a neighborhood. They, they fight, they fight the traffic, they fight development at the track, they fight development across the street. That's, that's an area that's impacted by what's going on about them. I think they deserve to be a district, okay? Many of the other permutations all, all work for me, but the, but I think that that, that area, like the, I guess it's Area 4 on the green map, I think that that area deserves some consideration for the, basically, the problems that they face as an area. I don't think anybody else faces the problems exactly like they do. Right now, that's, that's okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Just kind of following up the other comments, I do want to keep, you know, as many of the neighborhoods together as possible. The green, as, as Richard mentioned, keeping Carrier Row and New Dutch, because they deal the most with the, the base, and also the racetrack. The purple does that, and then also the El, let's see, the map, El Ordani map 3 tends to keep that as much as possible together. I'm concerned about the map 4, that just seems to be breaking stuff up, where New Dutch is all the way over with the Highlands, they don't share a lot of the common issues. And with the yellow, in Carrier Row, it breaks up one street, so across the street is a different district. It just seems kind of choppy throughout. Same thing with the tan, it just seems really choppy. So, the green, the purple, and the Ordani map 3 seem to be the best. And like I say, you know, we have trouble appointing commissioners. We didn't have an election in 2014, when Councilmember Wilson resigned, we had three applicants citywide for a seat that they didn't even have to run for. That kind of scares me when we're going now into five districts, and we are going to be going out and looking for people to run. There's an expense to running, there's a time that it takes to run, and then once you get an office, it's not 20 hours a week. I would say 30 to 40 minimum a week, if you're doing it the right way. I'm just, you know, we're going through this process, we'll see how it ends up, but I would like to keep as many of the neighborhoods together as possible that share the common interest and the common issues.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, looking at these maps, I think I'm most concerned about are those isolated pockets, and, you know, for instance, we have Parkwood Estates in, in... And, you know, for instance, we have Parkwood Estates, and unfortunately for them, they're just out there on the very far corner. But some of these maps kind of create kind of Parkwood Estate-like neighborhoods that are really separated from the districts. So, looking at green, I'm looking at it, there's two instances of, of that, Parkwood Estates, and over there on Farquhar, on purple, it looks like probably the most, I guess, continuous, contiguous neighborhoods, so that's not too bad in my mind. The tan, you got the, over there on Howard and Bluefield, which is sort of not connected to the Highlands and Parkwood Estates, so that looks kind of, you know, again, separated. And then yellow, kind of same thing over there in New Dutch, where they're just out there and not a lot of commonality with the Highlands and, and then even, it looks like suburbia. And map four and map five, they kind of do the same thing, I mean, map four, map three. And then the Strather map, looking at that, that one to me, it, at least, it kind of has everything sort of continuous. The one interesting part, I think, that's different on the Strather map, on district two, it includes the Eldorado Park Estates strip, which may, kind of makes sense in, in that standpoint. So, of the maps that I'm looking at, I kind of favor the Strather map the, the most in terms of keeping neighborhoods together. And I understand the concern about the apartment row, and unfortunately, when you look at, if forty-five percent, and I guess to, Dr. Levitt, is it forty-five percent are in, concentrated in apartment row, or just of, of the population?
Yeah. Thanks for, thanks for the question, because I want to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty-five percent of the entire city's population is in apartment row. And really, that block that kind of fronts Cotella Boulevard has very few people living in it. It's mostly the businesses that face Cotella. But those middle two blocks, and especially just right in the center of that strip is just, you know, we have blocks that have three hundred, four hundred people apiece. If I move three hundred block people from one district to another, that's nearly seven percent of a district's total population. And so, moving each, you know, I'm, you know, I talked with, you know, you know, we talk about these one blocks or two-block differences, some of them actually mean the difference between a map that's within ten percent and a map that's not. And so, it's very densely populated, it's only a handful of census blocks, there's only about twelve census blocks in there, maybe sixteen.
Okay, so my question on the Strather map then, I didn't look at the details on the brick, is that within that?
It is. And actually, Mr. Strather wanted to make sure that district three crossed Cotella on purpose, didn't have to, but he wanted to pick up some other businesses, including the hospital area. And that was part of one of the things he talked about, wanting that. But yes, what was your questions?
No, that was kind of, yeah, it, it just seemed to me, it was like, some of the other maps kind of create these pockets that are really disassociated from, I'll say, they may be a more critical mass of voters, or at least in the past, the more active kind of participants of the community. So, that, that would be my kind of concern, we would disenfranchise little pockets of neighborhoods who will not, you know, have a chance of getting a...
And there are some odd pockets, as you mentioned, some of those Long Beach-facing properties, the Parkwood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. So, a couple of different comments. I'll just go to where I, where I'm at, is I really like the green map, and I liked it for a couple of different reasons that two of the council members brought up, is I think that, you know, with the apartment row area, that the way that I think that you kind of balance the, the voter turnout and the registration is that, I think that it basically puts homeowners and renters together, and it's kind of a failsafe. Because I think when you have those two communities together, you will find somebody that will want to be taking care of it. I think, you know, I would also say, Mark, that the city council members that did run in the apartment row area, we had Ken Stevens and Jerry Mahia, you know, but they both run and won. So, they, they definitely, you know, were able to be influenced if they were able to find the time to do it. But I guess, you know, I'll just go back to the basics for me, is that, you know, I feel like this is like a forced marriage, and we're going to do it, and we're going to continue to go through all five of these because we're getting forced to do it by this legal action. But, you know, I think that the community could see that, at the end, I don't think this provides better governance. I think that it's, it's, it's an over-engineering of a very small geographic area, that's really trying to comply with something that really is a solution looking for a problem that I don't think we have in the city. But at the end of this, five hearings, we're going to go through this process, and we're going to take it earnestly and try to be as deliberate and, I guess, inclusive as we can to get everybody's feedback. But, but I think too, and the message to all the people that took the time to put their maps together, you know, this is not a process where we take it personal or get confrontational, I've told you guys this before, we all get to express our opinions. You guys get to express it just as strongly as we do. And I'm getting ready to get off this council after twelve years, I want to make sure that what I leave behind here actually is something that I want to have in my city. And like I said, I think for me, you know, I really value the combination of homeowners and renters in the district. I think it offsets the risk of maybe empathy that might happen in a rental area over time. I think that, I also, just because to run in three different city council elections, I walked this city three times, and I've had to go try to find people to actually run for city council. When I was in the very early 2006, 2008, and it was a tough council, you're just looking for friends. And when you're out there looking for people, you don't always find the right people that have the right motivations to why they're doing this. And so, I prefer people run for city council, and this is just my preference, not the entire council, but I want people that have put the time in the community, that have been involved with all different organizations that potentially have had interactions, it's not just a single transaction, or they're inspired because of a recent event. I want people that really have the history and understand. So, you know, from my perspective, I think the green is probably the best. I do, I, you know, honestly went through each one of these, and I think the, the harder part for me was really just trying to keep, keep the contiguous parts of the city together. The, the one thing I would agree with Councilmember Murphy is that a Carrier Row, and again, being the beneficiary, and sometimes on the bad end of that, myself personally with that group, they are very, very strongly organized, and they really do care about that part of the community. And I think they've always done a good job of trying to make sure that our city has a lot of focus there, whether they're, all their council members are from there or not. And right now, if you just look in the short term, you got Cypress getting ready to do development right there at the base, or at the, the racetrack, you're going to have a change of hands of that racetrack in the next ten years, a lot of stuff is going to happen. And, and again, that's why I lean towards the, the green design. So, I guess, city manager, city attorney, or city clerk, then the next steps, we've provided you input, we're going to have, this is hearing three, we'll have two more hearings. At this point, I think, do we have enough to go to the next level? You know, at this point, we're not taking a vote to try and get to the perfect district, we're really trying to get input. And, and I hope the community sees everybody's input, not just, you know, all of us up here. So, is there anything else that we should be taking care of?
Well, I'm going to say, I don't hear any specific requests for new maps or changes to maps, but if members of the public would like to continue to submit their comments, feedback, work with us, we're happy to do so.
Okay. So, just one last time, if you've spoken, then you've spoke, but I'm, I'm going to just, just because it's such an important item, and I want to make sure we got communities' input, there's more people in here right now than what, when we started the meeting. Is there anybody else that has a comment that they want to add to this process? Because we're going to finish about twenty minutes early here. Okay, I think Larry's going to make a run for it. Hi, Larry.
Hi there. Larry Strather, man from Rossboro who has no dog in this race, but anyway, it was an interesting challenge. I wanted to ask a question of the man from the demographic group. Because the one district, well, you have to organize these things by census blocks, which makes everything difficult. And the one that messed up everything was there's a block that takes in the very southern part of Dutch and the very southern part of suburbia. And is there any reason that the council by law has to follow that? Because that makes it real difficult to do, to keep the communities together and keep it within the ten percent number. That one block alone really messed up everything.
Dr. Levitt?
So, I think that's the question. Everything I would try to do is I try to keep, not so much by neighborhoods or by population, because, as you know, I know this community pretty well, and I found this community is divided really strongly by neighborhoods, but those neighborhoods are defined by common issues. Farquhar is a big issue, the traffic on Farquhar, the traffic on the boulevard is a major issue, traffic on Cerritos and proximity to the high school is a major issue. So, I think that's more important to keep those areas together than it is to try and separate it by, it's really a fictionalized difference in the community. I mean, you know, I, I look at these neighborhoods, and I put more importance on how many people volunteer from the communities, for the little leagues, for the schools, for that. You know, that, if people don't show up, I think you should, they have to have representation, but I think that should get a little less consideration than people who show up, not just at the easy meetings, but at the, you know, for, for events and nonprofits and things like that. And so, you have to take that all into account. But in doing all this, I think that, that one little census block at the very bottom of Dutch and suburbia messes up everything. If you get that squared away, and even, even after the 2020 election, it would make, you know, equality in this area a lot easier in keeping the neighborhoods together.
Sure. Dr. Levitt, you want to respond to that question at all?
Yeah, there are four hundred twenty-nine people in that census block, which is eight percent of a district, which is exactly the problem, that census blocks were not designed for cities like Los Alamitos, they're designed for state legislative redistricting, maybe county redistricting. The only thing we can do about it is that, you know, every ten years, the census does a survey for new blocks, but that's a completely technical process that we work with your planning staff, actually, on getting that information to the federal Census Bureau. We have no control over where census block boundaries are, and in this case, we just can't divide that block.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting what Larry says, is that, you know, if you think about it as a practical matter, and again, I'm not trying to be flipping and saying, hey, it's bad governance, just as a general practice, but think about this for a moment. It takes, there's ten different districts the way it's chopped up in our pavement plan, right? To, you know, our primary job, a big part of it, other than police and stuff, is to put, you know, potholes, fix potholes, repave streets. We have a pavement plan that basically, you know, we have to kind of wait our turn, every neighborhood kind of gets a shot, and it could take eight to ten years for that to come around. So, let's say you're running in one of the districts, and you have a really super important issue, you know, as a city, how do you maximize this when all your district cares about is, is that one thing? And you've got to get all these different groups working together. So, we, you know, we're a city of a bunch of different things, so, I don't know, I just think that this is, and I'll tell you what, after I get off the council, I hope to God that somebody passes the law and actually overturns this, and then maybe I'll run for council again and make sure that we go back to at-large, because this is the worst idea I've seen. But with that, I think at this point, if we don't have any other comments, John?
Well, I'm still studying the issue. Mayor, members of the council, John Underwood, I live in Carrier Row, very concerned about Carrier Row, my end of the community, which, over the years, historically, has been short, shrifted on a number of public amenities, a park, for example, we've been fighting for for years and years, and I concur with Councilmember Murphy's assessment of Carrier Row. But I have just two comments about the process, really. One is, I really think, and I think this was iterated by Councilmember Murphy on a different subject a few meetings ago, that I think it would be most appropriate and most condescending to the community to, in understanding all of this, if council, if public comment followed some of the initial council comments, it would be more informing of the public, and I think the public would have a better understanding and be better healed on the subject if council spoke first, and then the public was allowed to speak at some point after that.
Like we're doing tonight? Is that what you mean?
Well, like, well, after all council comments are brought forward, then the public be allowed to speak, and after some, a few moments of digestion of what the councils, where the council is coming from, I think it would be more informative for the public, and I think the public would be more able then to rationally, you know, respond. My second comment is, after speaking to some county officials, it's my understanding that there, it is possible for this kind of districting process to be conducted on a from-district basis rather than a by-district basis. That is to say, candidates are brought forward from the, each individual district, however that might map out, but then the election itself becomes at-large. And there are precedents for this, and there are other communities, and even some in Orange County that do it this way. And I'd like our NDC representative to explain, if he could, why that is not possible here, or why it hasn't even been broached here as a possibility for us. That is to say, a from-district election where the community at large, where all of Los Alamitos gets to vote, but each district puts up their own candidate.
Great. So, John, let me bring up Dr. Levitt, is that your only question that you have?
Yeah.
Because I, okay, Dr. Levitt, can you respond to that?
The California Voting Rights Act only provides safe harbor immunity from future litigation if you have by-district elections. From-district elections are actually not a safe haven. Some jurisdictions, especially community college districts, which traditionally have used from-districts, including Coats just off the street here, have switched to, to, have to switch to this by-district election system the city is considering as a result of the California Voting Rights Act, because, like I said, it's the only safe harbor.
Okay, great, thank you. So, at this point, if I don't see anybody else, I think we're going to go ahead and close the meeting, there's no need for further action?
I just, I just wanted to work, ask the demographer, what would be the time deadline for the public submitting any maps if they can before the next meeting, because that came up earlier?
So, our next meeting is July ninth, so anything that is available needs to be published on July second. We should receive anything, if you need us to work with you on something, we should have it in hand, no later than, I'd say, June twenty-ninth. That's to give us that turnaround to reach out to you, to set up an appointment, to talk to you, and to work with you in anticipation of July ninth.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All righty.
Mayor, do you want to talk about sequencing, with the ten minutes we have left? Wouldn't that be worthwhile?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Murphy.
I was asking the mayor if he wanted to spend some time on the proposed sequencing, because I, I think it's important as a city that we lay out the sequence before individuals get involved. That way, there's no complaints about how it was done, nobody's exactly sure what district is going where at this point. I, I think the, you know, and I'm the obvious one, the only one who's not running now, so in 2020, whatever district I get put in should be, should be up. And then, the harder question is going to be, if we go back to the two-three-two, who is the second one in 2020? I'd be one, who's the other one? Now, when Mark was elected, we talked about low vote getter, you know, would only get a two-year term. I don't know if this, we're still going to proceed along that route, and it also brings up a kind of appendage question, what if the low vote getter is in my district? Then you, you know, then you'd have to go second, you have to have a carve-out for that situation. Really, I have no preference, I'm up no matter what. And we have a few people retiring, I mean, this, it's a good chance to have a, have a discussion that people aren't protecting themselves, which is the reason I bring it up now.
Sure. So, let me ask you, Councilmember Murphy and City Attorney, so what we're talking about specifically was, for example, the appointment of Mark Jerko for the city council in this mid-election period, so he's a backup, we voted when we appointed that we would have that, so we have four seats open. How many would, because I think what you were talking about is what's going to happen to in eighteen?
No, in eighteen, there'll be four seats open.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's, that's kind of set already. It does help to write it down, I know. And then 2020, it's me and somebody, or me and two others if, if we decide to get off the two-three-two that we've been on historically, but let's just say it's two right now. So, I would be up, and then, when Mark was elected, it was decided that we would get him before the voters as quickly as possible, but if he wins in 2018, then you've got four people who have four-year terms.
Well, I think at that point, you'll have three people that have four-year terms, and somebody's going to draw a two-year term.
Right.
So, that, that procedural issue is the draw, and that's why I'm asking the city attorney, in 2018, once we get close to the election, let's talk about that sequence. And like you said, some of us are independent, it doesn't affect, so it's probably, you know, from my perspective, I'm probably the most neutral in this. So, how do we handle that?
I think, and I'll, Madam Clerk, if I say anything wrong about this, please correct me, but I think when there's four seats up, as has been suggested, the lowest vote getter would be pushed to a limit. be pushed to a limited term as compared to the full four years that the three with the largest number of votes returned would serve as.
That's what we said when Mark was appointed, that we'd have four, four people up this time. So, he gets, so that seat gets back before the voters as quickly as possible. But then the low vote getter only gets a two-year term. That was the discussion at the time. The question is, how do you implement that in my mind if you decide to go that way? You could also just pick a district, but then somebody's running for a two-year term. I don't think that's fair, personally, but I mean, we could live with it. We're in, as you said, we're in tough times, and hopefully by 2020, this is, people have come to their senses in Sacramento, and this is reversed. I'm sorry, it's, this, I've seen some crazy stuff in this state, but this, this is just beyond belief.
Yeah. Can staff add any clarity? Because I do wonder, I, you know, and I've heard, I was at an event over the weekend, somebody was saying, hey, you know, let's say Mark does win, but he's two or three, would, if he was third, and I hate to talk about you in third person here, but as a proxy or as an example, and let's say that he draws the two-year term, so his seat kind of in this 3-2 gets into effect in 2020. So, does the council have to take any dramatic action after the election to make any choice, or is it already predetermined when we made the commission or the, you know, the appointment early on?
You know, if, if I could, I would like to invite the consultant back up to see if they've seen this situation, have any insight.
Okay. Cool.
Well, you know, and of course, this is a unique situation that's brought in by a very unique charter, because I have never encountered another city that operates this way. Normally, what we see is a short-term election that's separate from the regular term elections, as separate positions. And so, that actually is going to be a very interesting question that I'm not, you know, that I'd like to make sure we have a legal opinion on before I say too much on the topic, especially about if you could change your sequencing between 2018 and 2020, for example, based on the 2018 election results. We are required by law to put sequencing on the maps and to provide you with a basic sequence of districts. It's your right to change this, it's your right to decide which districts you want up in which year. We have done this simply based on which members are currently in 2020 cycles, and that which members are on a 2018 cycle. And so, that's all we've done in terms of assigning the districts this way. And so, that means that generally speaking, Districts One and Five have been put up, or, you know, suggested for 2020. But I really, you know, that's a very important legal question that we want to make sure the attorneys get in on, on what happens after the 2018 election. Does the council have the ability to change anything after that fact?
Okay. So, that was a good question, right?
But if you want, we could look into that and bring it back for the next.
I think that would be good.
And I would just ask for the opportunity as well to work with a consultant, make sure we properly vet that issue and can come back with a better response.
Yeah, because we want to be transparent, we'd want to be reactive after the election, and everybody thinks that there was some reason why we did it, I'd rather know upfront.
Mayor, real quick question, as we're going down that, do we also need to address the what-if scenario, that if there is no election in 2018, if only four people run, and then who has the two-year term?
Yeah, that would be another variant of the map.
It's happened, so it just, once and for all.
The short straw, the short straw.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, get it out there, and, you know, we need to be proactive and not reactive on that as well.
So, City Attorney, you've got that added as a variation?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Can I just ask, the demographer, does the council have to make the determination by the next, at the next meeting on what the two or three districts will be in 2020?
So, I, I know there has to be a sequence in the ordinance that's adopted.
I've got a question. If the city had an at-large mayor, how does that play into this?
Well, it's the same, same sort of question normally that if you have a mayor, that the year that there would normally be three seats up, there's only two seats up. And so, there's two and two, and then the mayor is on one of those two cycles.
Okay, but would the mayor be voted on by the entire city if he's an at-large mayor or she?
Yes, yes. And that's exactly what you see cities that have at-large mayors do.
Yeah. So, we'd only have four districts, and then somebody would be at large?
That's right. You'd have four districts, and then, you know, or, you know, because you're a charter city, you know, you could have options, because charter cities can do what they want to do in terms, if you wanted five districts. But the general standard is four districts and a mayor.
Do you have any four-district maps that you would be able to put together, to be able to see what that option would be?
So, if you were looking, if you wanted to, if you wanted us to provide that, that we could do so under the, you know?
I'm just trying to see how it handles if there's any cleaner lines and something like that. And then they, you would have an at-large position that could be a tiebreaker when you have a bunch of conflicting priorities.
We'll, we'll work with staff on answering that question in terms of the scope of the contract.
Okay. Cool. Anybody else have any questions? All righty, we're going to go ahead and close this meeting and adjourn it. Then we're going to have our other city council meeting. I'm going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll start right after this. Thank you.